Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so I'm be happy to take minutes. However, I'm going to read last month's minutes for approval before I start my camera to be able to look at the minutes because I typically end up interrupting them and then forgetting to start the camera again. And then I don't have things to take minutes. So anyways.
You started the meeting on this?
Yes, the meeting was started and we're just, I'm gonna read last month's minutes and they're gonna look on those. And then, then I'm gonna start my recording so that I can provide the next month's minutes. Okay, so graphic planning board, twenty-two May, twenty-twenty-five. President Angus Gorman, Sabrina Kerwin, Paul Ovea, Steve Darrow, Ryan Huff, Sam Faulkner. Meeting was called to order at seven, ten P M. D R A and D E S have issued a cease and desist order to the Hiltz pit because of expired permits and plans. The board is inclined to let Hiltz continue basic operations within reason and ask for the appropriate complying documents to be provided slash updated as soon as possible. Reserving the possibility for enforcement if an updated permit cannot be approved in the immediate future. Town council has asked to help in this process. Sabrina shared a survey used for the town of Canaan for revising their master plan. The board discussed this and agreed that a survey like the one Canaan is using is concise and manageable. Sam suggested passing them out at the town clerk during vehicle registration. Sam suggested passing them out at the town clerk during vehicle registration would be the most reliable way to get the most complete input. Paul updated the board on the capital improvements committee. Sam shared some of his goals with the road agent. The board unanimously agreed to adjourn at eight P M. Sounds correct?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Make the motion to accept the minutes. That's just right.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So all we really need to consider about this is where we are with Hiltz. Let me start my thing. Okay, so we've got Angus, Paul, Alice, Steve, Gary Whitten, Jake Vogel, Ryan Huff. And so the only correspondence we have is a new old subdivision, but let's go over that in a minute. Just to touch back on the pit situation. Hiltz has provided the town with a reclamation bond. State seem to be taking quite a little while to have their council decide whether or not they should lift the cease and desist order. Selectman's office wrote everybody and said, we're lifting the cease and desist order because we have everything we need because we don't want to put these people out any longer. And so to the best of my knowledge, the pit is operating and the state is satisfied. And there is an updated plan with the reclamation plan because that was what was missing, I believe, is that there was not a plan or a bond for how to return the land to a usable condition if the pit was finished with. So everyone's happy, as far as I can tell. Although I think that the pit is kind of frustrated by how long they were forced to be closed for, but whatever, we did what we could. And then, any questions about that?
So this all stems from the fact that they expanded the pit bigger than they were allowed to. Up the hill, it looks like. They went up the hill, cut some trees down. So that's kind of the issue.
I
I'm picturing, I'm trying to picture how you would reclaim that steep land.
Right.
But it's not my issue. It's not our issue.
No, no, it's worth considering. I think that I don't, I don't really know what has happened. I have a suspicion that the state thought they were blasting where they had just cleared. Whereas in fact, they were not blasting, right? They cleared it. And it was understood and everyone like e- even the state guy was like, yeah, they're gonna get a logger in there and like clear a bunch rather than like have to call in a logger every six months to do their next little tier. They're gonna take a batch and the trees are gone, doesn't mean it's been blasted. So like if yeah, sure, you'd need a permit to cut for that, but you wouldn't necessarily need the train altering permit. And that wouldn't be, so I get the impression, and this is speaking with Hiltz directly, that they didn't actually overreach and that there was an assumption made on how far they had overreached. And honestly, it's frustrating because hypothetically, it's the planning board's prerogative to say yes or no to all this stuff. But like, it's also, you know, if the state has a problem, the state should try to deal with it. And I feel like there was a lack of communication that could have been, it could have been a lot better. It almost felt like they were trying to set a trap.
I think the state was confused. They had somebody new working there.
Well, let's not blame anyone in particular, but I think that there may be something. There might be something to that effect. And like, I think there was a kind of a hope that we're in a gotcha, to find a gotcha situation. And like why? Why? Like, like, there's, if you need something, just ask. Like, don't, don't wait for quiet and then, you know, it's like whatever. I think we're through it and I think everyone is good. Anyways, we have a subdivision back on the table for Larry Holmes. I'm sure you have. We received this application last July. I think they read through the script. And a surveyor had prepared a plan, which I don't have anymore, that was attempting to take one acre off of a five acre lot. And we it was basically like, we can't do that because, you know, unless there were two houses, that's the idea. There are two houses on a five acre lot. They'd like to subdivide them. This is the new thing, but they wanted to just take one acre off. And because both houses had been built after the two acre minimum was instated, there's not really any room for consideration. Like if there had been, if both of these houses have been there since, for like a hundred years. And, you know, they had separate septic serving rooms. It's like, fine, we could consider like an exception for that, but like, you know. At a certain point, it's no different than just building another house and a lot and saying, well, there's two houses, so I can cut half an acre off for one house to be on that. So anyways, the surveyor went back and created a cubist rendition of an hourglass. And in front to look, it's kind of fascinating, but it is conforming. Nice. And it will keep everybody quiet. You know, because it's two acres. So then he's gonna start lining up saying, well, who did it?
Two point zero one.
Right.
Yeah. It's conforming, not the most picturesque way you wanted to buy property up, but
Right. I, I do think that this is an excellent example of lack of preparation on the property owner's part, knowing that there was a two acre minimum. Because both houses were built after the two acre minimum. And so it's like
Do you know when they were built?
I don't.
You know, it would seem to me that if that's the case, they should have been informed by, I mean, I know that the billing notification that doesn't come in front of the planning board
Right.
doesn't come in front of the select board. Rule of thumb, rule of thumb in the past, or past practice wise, where you take the, the land that they have, divide number of houses, dwellings into it, and if it's greater than two, it's okay. But this is what happens when you do stuff like that.
Right. You can, you can build all the houses you want, but they're just all gonna be on the same deed. On the same tax law, like, you're not gonna be able to subdivide.
Well, there are those that say that they shouldn't even be approved, two dwellings on a single lot. I mean, that's an argument that's been around for a long time. But
Well, it's complicated too.
It goes a lot deeper than that. I don't want to get into it, but yeah, that's been an issue in the past.
Anyways, the homeowner is understanding of the need to maintain precedent and is not upset. At least not at us. I don't know if he's upset at the surveyor for not noticing that there's a big old two acre minimum on the subdivision application, but whatever, I think we can probably get what we need and move ahead with this.
Can I ask, so this house has to go through this property to get to their house?
Correct.
And they'll have a deeded right of way
Correct.
through this property.
And that's pretty normal.
Yeah.
I don't actually know if the deeded right of way counts towards the two acres or not. And I'm not sure I wanna
I don't think so because it's only a right of way. It's not a piece of that property.
Right.
Guess it's not our issue if these people can't get along.
Exactly.
That's buyer beware.
Buyer beware, yeah. This is very much like civil suit territory, not the municipal courts probable. Okay. So what do we need? We need to decide if we like this and we need to compile a list of the butters. I am not familiar with the surveyor. And I will be willing to compile the butters list and mail out the butters notices if we decide that we'd like to go ahead with this.
Isn't that your job?
Technically not.
Oh, okay.
Well, if it's conforming, what, on what grounds would we reject it? If it's a conforming subdivision? Do we even have a legal right of rejecting it if it's
I don't think so. But we haven't approved, we haven't approved it yet. And like, you know, we still have to have a public hearing next month or whatever. So
Butters still need to be notified.
Correct.
Regardless.
Yeah, ten days before the public hearing and we need to post, you know, post the notice on the website and at the town office. No, I don't see any reason to, or as Steve said, I don't see any way we can deny them this. It's, I think it's fine. So I guess I'll just need to
Just need to give the paperwork.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess this is not entirely complete. I'm not afraid of gathering, I'm not afraid of approving this conditional to gathering the appropriate things before the next meeting. Like we need a copy of the deed, for example. Right. And they haven't stayed available because it's a small lot, so. I don't think so. Sorry. Yeah. Where's that place? What do you know?
It's just, it's weird, isn't it? So this is the one house this is?
That's, that's an existing house there. This is one, this is one garage.
So this is an existing, existing house that isn't in the picture?
That's an entirely different lot.
Yeah, yeah. That's one house, that's the other house. That's Cherryville Road.
Right, so you're getting
And there must be an existing driveway already.
Must be.
And then they just get a right of way for the driveway.
Yep.
We've had some strange looking subdivisions. And that's certainly one of them.
Interesting.
Yeah.
The tiny waste.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's what I thought, tiny waste.
The bustle. Okay, that's what they want to do. It's weird.
Right. I don't think there's anything preventing it from working that way, so.
Right.
I guess that's how it goes. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so we'll just confirm that we've got one, two, three, four, five butters that are accurate.
In the last subdivision, wasn't it the surveyor that sent out the notices to the butters?
It, it certainly has been. And it's, that is up for discussion. I see Gary rubbing his palms together. Typically, we've been willing to allow surveyors who we've worked with a lot to do that.
Okay.
And honestly, the only two that I can name who would fit that description are Chris Rollins and Scott Sandbourn.
But normally, it's the planning board that does it?
I think legally, it's the planning board that's supposed to do it. And it's been a, it's been enlightening to have a trusted surveyor do it, but I, I don't know who this is. I have no reason to believe anything, so I'd like to just do it this time. So, yeah.
Good. Sounds good.
Alright, so we need a deed, we need a list of the butters, we need a notice mailed, and we need then we need the public notice being placed. Then we host a public hearing for the July meeting. Supposing the surveyor can't get their act together and provide a Mylar before then, that's fine.
Yeah.
Hold the public hearing as long as the Mylar is identical to this. As shown at the public hearing, we'll be fine. If there's a change that would warrant reconsideration, then we'd have to hold another one. But ideally, we'd have at least the landowner, if not the surveyor here for the July meeting at the public hearing. So I can, I can volunteer to send out notices and place the ad provided that the correspondence I do suggests that we opt in. Like, I'll check in with the, with the homeowner and maybe call the surveyor as well or email the surveyors. Any other questions? Alright, so I would entertain a motion to proceed with a July public hearing for the subdivision conditional to receiving the necessary things like the deed.
Also.
And the butters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, okay.
Did you agree to accept the application? Is that what we just did, something?
Correct. And, and then we'll, we have accepted the application and then and then we will approve the well, we'll do like a two-part thing. Say, well, accept the application as complete of the public hearing and then accept the subdivision as presented if we end up doing so at the hearing. Alright, that's about all I've got. I caught some of what was going on. Is there
Yes, I can report. The capital improvement planning committee met just before the planning board. We are very close to having our draft ready up for dissemination. We met tonight with the fire chief. We had previously met with the highway department person, Sam?
Yes, Sam Faulkner.
And so we feel like we've got a pretty good list now, which you can have a copy up here as well. Next month, we will get back together and we will prioritize the six-year plan. We will, a lot of the things go beyond the six years, but we're gonna take all the things that are on the list that are within the next six years and, and try to prioritize those and then hand it to both the planning board and to the select board at that point.
Nice.
I know we had said, you know, when we started that it would be spring of this year that we would do that. So we're a little bit behind.
But we're making progress.
But we're making good progress.
You know, and I think the important thing is we're gonna, we're gonna make it prior to the election cycle. So we're way ahead of the game as far as that goes. So the, as far as planning for that, the select board will have the information in order to decide what to ask the voters to approve.
Yep.
So it's looking good.
Alright, Steve, executional?
Executional. Well, did everybody receive their letters from Avatar?
Some big bucks.
Big bucks.
Do you have any idea what the tax rate would be if all those things were?
What the tax rate will be? Well, no, not all hands. But if it's a, you know, if, if everything doubles, then the tax rate will be halved.
Do you think things doubled? Sure looked like it.
Well, mine was in the, yeah, mine was pretty close to double.
Yes.
And I can say that some properties, I've looked at some properties and they have doubled. And there's certain properties that are, that got hit harder than others. And that includes waterfronts got hit hard. And it also includes manufactured housing got hit hard.
So double is kind of a thing?
Double is kind of the thing, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, hypothetically, if everyone doubled and everyone's budget, budget's the same and everyone's taxes is gonna be the same.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it doesn't really work out like that because not everybody goes up by that. I mean, it's on an average, everybody doubles, but somebody's more and somebody's less. So it'll come out in the wash, but some, some people will
I imagine there's some people flipped out when they opened it.
Well, I've received a couple of calls. Yeah, it's, it's shocking. And I've tried to, you know, mention it in our select board meetings that, you know, this is coming. It's coming.
Now, you can talk about the
And since the, our last one, we've had the pandemic. And the pandemic just made property prices skyrocket and they're still up there. So that's, that's what happens.
Do you know if we have easy access to itemization of the property card as proposed yet?
You, you go online, you can see everybody's property card.
But like, I, I know the number that I received in the letter sounded like it was a like it was tentative, like it may not be on the property card yet. Or are the property cards updated?
The property cards, all the new property cards, when you, in that letter, it tells you how to get into Avatar and how to get into this, and it gives you the passcode and all that. And you can go in and you can look at everybody's property card.
Okay.
You know, and that's in pretty much detail. You know, and there's, some of them are five pages long, depending on what's going on on that property, so.
Selfishly, I'm
The big thing I have, you know, and I was discussing it at home, is that it's, the, the goal is to reflect true market value. And what I have found by looking at it is if anybody has current use on their property, that's the figure, that's the bottom line. It's not the ante-bolorum property. So if you have a lot of current use property, you're being taxed a lot less than if the property wasn't. So
Well, yeah.
You know, that, that's, that figure of how much would that, your property be assessed at if there were no current use? And I think by doing that, you're looking at apples to apples. Instead of, you know, a lot of people don't like current use because they don't have current use and they call it welfare for the wealthy or, or whatever. And so just by glancing at their values, you have to look to see if it says current use. So if it says current use there, you have to go to the land tab to find out what that land would be assessed at if it were not for current use.
And is it typically provided?
It's there.
Okay.
So you have to do a couple of calculations to get there, but it's all, it's all included there, so.
People love hating on current use. It's the only reason it's so rural here.
Yeah.
It's still a boss. It's like, if you've got land of current use, no one's using, no one's using services living there. It's like
To, to, to maintain open space. You know, and you have large tracts of land that people, and it benefits everybody to have them open. So that's, that's the incentive.
It's really good.
Unfortunately, on, on the other side of the coin, current use, the, the other taxpayers pay for it. And the land is kept open for the enjoyment of the public. Well, a lot of that public lives down in the southern part of the state or out of state where they have no impact on taxes. So people who don't have current use are carrying the ball for the people who do. And it's meant to stay open for, for everybody, for people who don't. So, you know, there, there's there's arguments to be made both ways on that.
No one, no one says that you I, I feel like you spun something a certain way, Steve, there, that's just a common misperception. You can post current use property all you want, as long as you don't take the 20%
I'm not, I'm not just representing that. I know you can post it, but it's still open land. There's a bunch of houses there.
Right.
So wildlife out there has all, all nature's benefits. And that's what I'm really, really
The owner of the
Yes, exactly.
I only mention that because so many people are like, how can you post it if it's in current use? And it's like, well, there's two brackets. And like, I don't like posted property, but like, you can. And if it's your private property, you're right to do so.
I agree. I don't like posting property either, but you know what else I don't like? I don't like bear hunters with their dogs coming onto my property and saying, if it isn't posted, I'm allowed to do this. And I don't like that. So
No, fair enough.
My property, I'll do what I want.
Fair enough. Nice. I'm just looking forward to seeing the itemization just because we have so many greenhouses and so many sheds and so many things. And I want to know if it was our house that became worth an extra hundred grand or it's like all the other stuff there.
Right, right. There's probably a lot of people looking at, you know, comparables. You look at what your value is and then you go to see what you think a house about, like, your property about, like yours would be, you know, assessed for. I mean, selectmen can get calls in the winter saying, you put more sand on Joe Blow's road than you did on my road.
Okay. Of course. Or like, the road agent only fixes the road he lives on. That's, have you ever had to field that one?
Yeah, because I happen to live on the same road. But I can tell you one thing, he never came down to my end. It was always nice when his driver gone the other way.
Alright, public comment?
I do. Hey, so it sounds like with this quarry, is that what it's called?
The pit.
Yeah, the pit, yeah. It sounds like there were no lessons to be able to be learned from the town municipality government. It sounds like this was all like a state thing and miscommunication between the owner and the state. Like, there's nothing you could have improved on? Is that reading it?
No, no, I, I think that's a really diplomatic way of bringing that up. I don't, I don't know.
I'm just looking for lessons learned. It sounds like
Totally. I don't know if there's anything that we could have learned. I think Steve's thought that maybe there's a newer person working at the state. I think Steve thought that maybe there's a newer person working at the state may be part of why this was like kind of chaotic. In the future, I would just like to see any involved party who doesn't have what they need talk about it before screeching on the brakes. That, that's kind of what seemed to.
So maybe we can facilitate communication if we want to be proactive, like, that's probably.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's good enough.
I mean, I could definitely consider bringing the new plan to the next planning board meeting so we can look at it and see what a reclamation bond looks like and see what the new plan looks like.
That'd be interesting.
It's interesting, I mean, it's, um. No, good question, for sure. Any other? Okay. Motion, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds to me like Steve wants to hunt all the bears himself.
I want all those bears for myself, I'm gonna chase them up a tree, I have a, I have a tree.